Evening, fellow councillors and members of the assembly.
This is the Mayor, this is the Chairman. If I could just crave your indulgence for a minute. There's one or two things I'd like to change on the agenda this evening. We have an item five issues relating to Stateford Cemetery. Unfortunately Craig, who was going to his presentation, has been called away. So we're moving it to the end of the agenda because Craig has very kindly created a report for you. We'll pass these around so we can all have a look at them prior to discussing the item. So with the Chair's permission, we're moving this to the end of the agenda.
All I was going to say, who is the actual people that's come to listen to this item? And I don't think it's fair it's being moved.
Well, good way to root high.
Oh, sorry, I was talking to the Mayor actually.
Have you got some other care please?
Sorry.
Excuse me, I'm putting the speaker in to be safe at...
Ten minutes.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, I do apologise for that. But we wouldn't use the hard issues like this at the moment, so I do apologise. Right, that's what I'm saying, Craig, your indulgence.
Will they stand in or sit there?
We can't, and we don't... councillor Hull's just asked us, do we lock the doors? No, we can't lock the doors because of fire issues.
Fire again, we've been talking about that.
Technically, I should keep the doors, I'm about to close that door, I'll open it tonight if anyone wishes to complain, I'm going to open it again. But technically, I should keep the doors open as well. However, this evening, I have also taken the automatic off the back door. The supplier alarm went off, these doors were bottomed back to the open. But if you are leaving, you will have to give them a big push.
Don't forget I'm under, don't leave her in here, please.
Don't leave me, that's all. So I do apologise. I do apologise for slightly breaking the meeting, we'll try and get back to it. Right, item five.
No, it's alright, I'll leave it as is, sorry about that. Yeah, yeah, no, I'm happy.
Next one. Can I say...
Are we supposed to be standing or sitting?
Yes, I'm standing, thank you very much. Mrs May, you may have noticed a few changes to my team. As you know, Mrs May retired earlier this year. And over the last couple of weeks, Remerica has left as well, she's not going to work full time elsewhere. So I have a new team, I have Ben, he's standing in for Kim this evening, if you can find out how we do this. I'll go to the back.
You look like Henry Wester.
They've already had the baptism of fire, having to work in a bed like me. It's been great fun, more of that later. However, I'm sending round a card, if you'd like to sign it. With Remerica well, in her new position, can also say that Kim has... Is unable to work this evening, she's very ill. I'm sure you will, you along with yourself, send to your best wishes.
Because obviously, if I was waiting, shall we say, if we're talking, can we actually say which councillor we are, so that the party down just knows?
Well, we're in trouble every time David talks, so don't worry.
Sorry for that, but yeah, I wasn't speaking up. Right, the other thing is, before the end of the meeting... Before the end of the meeting, I will be passing round a basket, in pink. Westcounse awareness month, and this is something Stateford Town Council has done for as long as I can remember. We raised £2 pounds for the Westcounse clinic at City Hospital. There's no compulsion to put anything in, but please just think about it, think pink. And it's something that affects so many people, men as well as women, being as victims or some associations. So please just take a moment to think about thinking. And I understand that councillor Green was just making a presentation to town council as well, and if we can do that at this point. Why does that forget?
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, this year is the 30th year for the Stateford Town Council to be here. And I thought it would be nice of idea if I passed over a little memento of last Saturday's concert, which I'm sure the Mayor will talk to you about later on. Mr. Mayor, I would like to pass you a little memento for the town council.
Thank you, David.
You're very welcome.
Right, Mr. Chairman, thank you for that, thank you councillor. We will mention this event when we do our committee. Thank you very much. Thank you. Right, we will get on with you here, Jane, now, thank you very much, good luck.
Any questions for our members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a call for our members from councillors Sharon Enser, John Gould, Brian Powell and Susan Rose. And as you've seen, councillor London has left the meeting and I'll be back as well.
Any questions of interest?
Mr. Chairman, we'll do this in our usual manner. Rock still please show. Thank you. Not House Council? Nope. So we've got the agenda, council and team. Thank you. What ones? Stateford Carnival, I know we've got an association with that, no. Anything, I can't see anything else personally, but anyone that's got any other...
Christmas and state footers, and that's fairly good, isn't it?
No, that's not, that's... That doesn't matter, that's lovely. Well, not at the moment.
What, Christmas and state footers doesn't matter?
No, you're never going to get that, Stephen Booth. At this point, for the press declarations, it isn't an issue. If it becomes an issue, it's futile, you think, okay? Anything else that comes up during discussion this evening, if you feel you have an interest, then declare it then. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe there's any time, council, we can help, um...
Mr. Chairman, seven minutes before I tell you. I don't know if anyone wants... can someone propose a second please? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is there any requests from...
Mr. Chairman, no, I have no requests this evening. Thank you. Issues related to Stateford Cemetery, remember we can hear the end of the meeting. Next one will be to check Mayor's engagements. As you can see, kind of even busy.
Last Saturday, we had the 30th anniversary of the council. And we had the new Richard Churro concert plan. It was an excellent concert, a thank script to the council, that's a head with. And I'd also like to say, thank you for the councillors that's been delivering it to us.
Mr. Chairman, the concert last Saturday was a great success and we have received many pieces of work, we need to church grand it, fund. I haven't done the final, I'm still waiting for money to come in, we want to have that early morning of the evening. It was a great night, level ten, and it'd be lovely to see a few more people there. The band would love to come back. And hopefully we'll be able to do something in future years with them. They're very well renowned, and there will be a television look out for bargain pants Christmas edition. They will be playing at that, it was filmed today at the New Churro Showground today. Thank you very much to the people that supported, thank you to my team. I think everyone enjoyed it, I heard fantastic feedback from it. So I'm thankful again for that. As regards to our own events, I would say town members can really be out at job fairs and events in our council. Probably TC 1760, dining and eating, it was a fantastic success. Can I draw your attention to remember Sunday and to the Ammanstay event? I hope you will support this, you will be receiving emails from us regarding these events. If anyone wishes to lay a review, can you please let me know as soon as possible? I need this information urgently. So anyone that wishes to, anyone that's thinking of it, contact me please as soon as possible. If you decide we're going out this week to this event, road closures etc will be dealt with. As you will recall from the last meeting, we did have issues regarding this matter. However, the League of Councillors and myself made a combined service of we managed to iron out these issues satisfactorily. So hopefully we will have the usual, very good debate and everyone will be pleased with it.
Again, the combined services said what a good event to do, I said, a good event to do, what a good meeting it was. A town asked me to meet it, and they said thank you to both of you for meeting them. And they said they wished it had done it years ago, and I just sat there and went...
Yeah.
So it worked, you know, so thank you very much.
Yeah, let's move on with it and keep going, it is a very worthwhile event, I hope you will attend it. Christmas lights will come to later, but please look out for emails to downtown in the Sunday. Thank you.
Town centre management team.
Yeah, ten minutes. I didn't attend the last one, which was last night, I attended the previous one, but question for pre-attendance last night's meeting, if you've any information...
Yeah, I've got a little bit, yeah. I've got the football figures, if anyone wants to have a look at them, it's the super exciting, they're going this time. And it reckons we had twenty... I'll let you know. Twenty-six odd thousand people in Stateford last week, and if you read the figures, then we was really busy on the high street, the shops say otherwise. Right, so yeah, I've got, it was a very positive meeting last night, and there was a lot of people there actually, I've never seen so many turn up, so I don't know what that was all about. And there was a possibility of various new businesses coming to Stateford that was discussed, but that's as far as I can leave that, because it's not fair on the businesses. There's also going to be a late night training event on the 16th of November, and that's been organised by Vanessa, is it T for two? I think I've got that right, way around. So she's done very well organising that. The Christmas event was discussed, and there was no enthusiasm from the businesses to fund lights for their own businesses. But that's only the businesses that was there last night, not the whole high street, there might be others that want to, you know. And people were not happy, the way the Christmas event has been taken away from the town team by liberty of leisure, but it is what it is, and we're stuck with that now, aren't we, so, you know. And the Stateford Post Office, where it is at the minute on Church Street, closes on Sunday, December for January. And then it reopens in gadgets, which everyone calls Sean's shops, or probably keep calling it Sean's shop, it's actually called gadgets, they're going to put a new sign on. It opened on the 8th, and I've asked Sharon if she wants to invite the Mayor on, and I'm sure she will. That date could change, you know, as of now, on 18th of December, I think it's the post office are going in to start the shop fitting and everything, so it doesn't happen then. And then put an application into a ramp on the front, you know what I mean, so that's pretty good, and that was kind of all we spoke about, we were there for an hour. But I've got these things, if anyone wants these football figures, they're here.
Sharon, I know that part of it has been discussed, I think I was that, and businesses have said to me about it, they don't know where they're getting that from. That I thought someone's going to look at, check how they're actually bringing these figures in. Yeah, it's...
Is it what?
Does people like logging on to the Wi-Fi?
No, it's not just, it's, sorry, it's not, sorry, it's not just people logging on to the Wi-Fi, that does count as well, but it's a football counter, and it just pings off your phone. So as long as walking on with two phones in the pocket, it's not being twice, you don't have to connect to it. But we don't know if it's people coming from Wussers or not, because they're saying if you're going over a certain speed, it might not be picked up. But Wussers are pretty slow and they stop quite a lot, so it's, I think it's blue elephants, isn't it, and I shouldn't know. We're waiting for them to get back to them, to break it down, but they can actually break it down to our hourly throughout the week, and, you know. So if anyone wants it broken down more than what that is, just let me know, I can get that sorted.
Just thinking, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a number. Then how do you see the issue is?
It's always asking those, isn't it? Yeah, we'll ask. So, so no, at least we've asked, haven't we?
Haven't asked a question.
Or contributed, if you want. Where's the message, we tap on them, because you're welcome to call, anybody can call, anyone on the table can call.
No, but, okay, the questions, what I'm saying is, Remender's brought something up, which is a reasonable request. So, right, what we need to do is formulate a question, and we'll ask Remender's questions.
Come in and see me, councillor, and...
Yeah, yeah, we can ask, we can ask, yeah.
I'm here on day tomorrow, come in and see me tomorrow, and formulate something.
Yeah, we're in luck, we're in the next one, okay, we can't do it next week, it's got to be further on.
Come in, yeah, come and see me, I'm here tomorrow, I'll make do tomorrow, come and see me.
Stateford Carnival.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm not particularly excited on the agenda where it's going, but councillor Craig...
Yeah, no, I've had a lot of people contact me, and I've got some stuff written down from notes from what people have asked me. And it just says here, right, Stateford Carnival has been dying of death for several years now, especially since the removal of the muscle parade. And anybody there this year will realise how bad it was. People enjoy the parade, and they like to follow it through Stateford and all the way home, and it's an embarrassment for this event, it's called the Stateford Carnival. And with the support of this council, I would like to propose to take our rights to the event organisers and ask them if they would be willing to meet with interesting parties. I know that one of the football teams wants to help as well, you know. Because there's other people that's more than willing to help and support the organisers that do it, to bring back Stateford Carnival to its former glory and see the return of the parade again. So that's all anyone wants, and there's lots of people that have been willing, I was wondering if it's something the council could support.
Mr. Chairman, can I just stop you there, through this, it's not a town council event, it's never been...
I know, I said it was.
And I would advise the town council against taking over any organisation.
I should take every vote.
As soon as you say the town council, right, it would be better if these individuals who want to be involved wrote to the organisers. Because once the town council gets involved in any event, it changes how it's run. It's not a voluntary group running it, it becomes a local authority running it. And anyone involved with the Henley happening will tell you that's why it's a voluntary group that run it, not the council. So you're asking the town council to write because people have contacted you the councillor.
Yeah.
It would be far better if the individuals or the organisations they represent...
Yeah, no, I get that, but what I'm saying is, would the council support these groups doing that?
Council can't support without knowing what the council, what these groups would want to do.
They just want to help and get the parade back.
It's not, yes, but what, we would need, Mr. Chairman, the town council would need to know who the groups were, what they were planning to bring to it, and how they were going to do that.
So if the groups contact, sorry, if the groups contact the organisers and copy the council in, is that a very important to do it that way?
Then, then what could happen is, they could apply to the town council for assistance, and if it fell into one of the...
We had this one, yeah, that's what I was saying, yeah.
But it would need to fall into whichever council, wait, I've got the camera.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Because I can't dictate policy. But the best bet would be to write to the organisers, say how they want to be involved, what they want to do, why they want to. And then they would, if, they would formulate themselves into however they would work the carnival organising, and then they could approach... The way the town council would wish to become involved in supporting it would be for the town council to decide. I think this has never been a town council event.
No, no, it needs to be.
And the town council at the moment supports it purely by sponsoring, you know, various competitions or whatever, and that's...
It would be nice to see the town council supporting getting the parade back, that's what I'm trying to get at.
I just stop you for one minute, people in the public gallery putting up their hands, you cannot speak at a town council meeting unless you have requested permission in advance.
I should know that.
Sorry, I can understand where you're going from, I can understand whoever it is could, but surely, like I say, we support it by, you know, if you...
You can't...
We, I mean, you know what I mean, we go down in the industry, I think it was just, excuse me, if you think, which is just basically say, would it be nice if the elect came from the town council saying they have the support, if people have the support of the council? We're not saying anything badly, or, you know, you...
It's nothing to do with money, Mr. Chairman, as your proper officer, you cannot support groups that you don't know who these groups are or what they are proposing. That's, as your proper officer, I am counselling you, if you like, that if you support something without knowing what you are supporting, you can't do that. You need to know what...
Would the councillors support and pray be walked back again? If they do, would they help people that are interested in doing that?
I can't, no, I can't answer that.
Well, I'll listen to the groups, and then it's up to them to do that.
What you would need to do, Mr. Chairman, is, and having been involved with the organisation of two major parades, and the difficulties involved in it. I can assure you, what you would need to do is draw your full plan, your highway situation, your road closure and your security.
Yeah, we did that over here, and we were told it was a wretched parade, so it never happened, but we did actually organise all that.
I can comment, and you need to speak to the police about it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can give the name of the place, but you need to...
No, I'm not giving that, I won't tell the football teams or that.
What you need to do is, basically, you would need to speak to the organisers, you would need to bring them on board, you would need to, you would need to then draw your plan of what it was, you would then need to present it. You are talking about a silly, very tricky issue, and that's, but you cannot support it until you actually have...
No, I won't say them to tell them to do that, oh, hang on.
Sorry, just get over the lines, I'm working up the lines, you know what I mean, whoever it is, red-traiting nowadays. I'm just asking to tell them I wanted to meet them, simple as that.
And speak to...
Just say lots of purism, you know what I mean, but...
And speak to highway and traffic management, etc.
So people can do that, not...
Mr. Chairman, you can't, you must not even be aware of it, call themselves CCs, county council will tell you, the road closure, you must have an official traffic management company that they recognise to close the road. And the police will not let you close the road without an official traffic management company.
There's one at Greece, we're going somewhere away from it.
Chair, did they, just, Stallow Carnival, to me, went a long time ago, but I apologise, I've never been involved, but do they get funding for road closure? No, so they're, they're like, they're going to have to form it themselves.
Yes, it's a private event, it's run by a private organisation, media terrorist organisation or whatever. It is a completely private organisation.
Sorry, sorry to ask a silly question. Did we still have the car party? Still do that, or did it not happen yet?
No, I'm sitting, I'm...
Well, did they have, beautiful, there's like cars going, nobody would walk in one of those...
No idea, there was about six tractors went by.
Through Bessel Way, not walk.
Yeah, about six or seven, I might be wrong, it was about six or seven.
It's the race meeting, isn't it? Okay, make sure you clarify everything with the police.
Well, it's up to the event organisers, really, it's their thing, it's all going out. Yeah, of course.
Event organisers, we need to agree with the police for...
Yeah, no, no, of course, if there is people that want to help them, that's what I'm trying to get at, like, if there is people who want to help.
I'm sorry, I can't be more forward than this, but I have to be very careful, I mean, not so...
Yeah, no, no, that's what you're there for, isn't it?
But it really isn't, can I suggest, um... That if you get the organisation together, get their things, and then you can give us some feedback on it. You know, that's the important thing, you get something in that way, and then we're in a complete bad, bad, then we're in a different position to what we can look at.
You would need to make a formal application.
But that's the thing, get some more, get some more information, then come back to it, and then we can look at it, and see what situation is coming.
Without facts and figures, and the insurance issues, and the laws that police have approved it, and that, um, that you have proper traffic management, there's no way the town council could support it. And I do counsel you, some have cancelled their things that run through the year where they lost, danced, or not, and some because of the issues and...
Slap what we do.
Okay? Anyone else, Mr. Chairman?
I'd just quickly like to say, obviously, the Carnival and having a parade, it's brilliant, it's a parade, it's a party. Obviously, lots of people actually already been back, but as the town councillors said, obviously, it is a full programme put together, it is the finance, traffic, and everything. But if everybody, if everybody wanted to work together to try and get it done, then, you know, I'm sure that town council might come back to the town council one day, maybe. Something might be able to happen, but until you have all the information, you can't.
Yeah, I can't do any more, this is other information, Mr. Chairman. Are we happy to move on, or...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm ready, issues in Stenwick.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there were some issues related to Bailey Street, I understand they've been withdrawn. So if we leave that for the moment and come back to it, if it appears in the future, I look forward to cases being working.
Can I just say, councillor McCrory and I are trying to organise, well, we are, have organised, and rejuvenated traffic and transport, so, just the Stateford, because it possibly should leave it, Romans, people are probably going by, stand please stop. But it was his initiative, it wasn't the council thing, so we've, I'm assuming Margaret's sent us stuff out now.
It's going out tonight.
Going out tonight.
Tonight, tomorrow, I'll have to report it to you.
There will be a meeting next Friday at 11 o'clock here. We'd invite all the people, you can come to the traffic and transport group, as I said. Do feel free if you want to come, 11 till, well, probably 12 o'clock, but we're going to try and see if, how it works on the ground, and nothing seems to be happening otherwise. The list of roadworks that I showed people around has been sent to Laura Crosslow. We've put together the projects that we want to put to the county council, and at the moment, we've not sent them off yet because it's time, time of another event where I was talking to John Cottee about funding. And he said the criteria for funding will be on their website in a couple of weeks. So we're actually, well, I'm assuming, I can only go by what I was told, but, so what we're going to do is, wait, we're going to send the project in. Wait till we see those criteria before we send it off, and we're going to be sending them to the two local, I think we could call them county councils, our representatives or whatever. And he did request that he could come be in. So, but do feel free if you're three next Friday to come along, it's not specifically for anything else.
Chair, I might be able to come to that one, but I've got to build the bonfire across, but they'll tell the council. But I'll probably, I'll probably nip round to that one, mate, if I could, because there's one or two things that we probably ought to have. But what you're doing is right and correct, and I think, well, I'm not going to make comments about whatever, but...
No, no, don't go there, please.
I'm going to go in the door for the bonfire.
Please, I can just say, the invitation for it tomorrow, I have to report to you tonight that this is happening. And I'm asking each group to send one representative along, so that every time the meeting's held, there'll always be someone who, from each group, to try and keep the proportionality going.
And chair, it would be nice if they all come from the south, so every councillor, if there's one from the south available, we sell for a raid, one from the north, and one from the east. At least you get a collective view of what everybody wants, and there's no, well, I'm not saying...
The first meeting, Mr. Chairman, I think will basically be an introduction, we'll be seeing, we'll see what people like, and what they want to discuss, and how they want to go with it. So hopefully it will work. I'll see you all next week. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, anything else on that one?
Councillor McCrory.
Yeah, I've got a few little things, I was going to mention the stuff Dave said when he did me to it, because he caught the councillor Cottee on a school playground, didn't you, so, well done catching him, man. Right, but anyway, recently, it's come to my attention, I wrote some notes, and everyone was, I forget what I'm talking about. It's come to my attention that Nottinghamshire County Council will not be building, no, sorry, will not, I get the words right, they're not willing to build the pedestrian crossing on Ickins Lane. I don't know if anyone knows about this, I'll just tell you a little bit about it, because it is I.A.D. It was a requirement of the planning permission granted by Roxton Borough Council as part of the McCarthy and Stone development on the Simba site. And I don't know if you've read any of the minutes from planning and whatnot, it was something that I requested them, everyone supported it, you know, I'm sure all you guys do, it's a pedestrian crossing, we need them. And the money has been secured through Roxton Borough Council for this project, and give or take, it was around about £50,000, but they paid that so they could build the things. And it says in the minutes, and Dave will know because he's chair planning, it says that nobody can move in until the crossing's done, or words to that effect. So for the life of me, I don't understand why Nottinghamshire County Council... So for the life of me, I don't understand why Nottinghamshire County Council, who don't need any money, because the money's already there, and are saying that they don't want to do it. Um, and I was just wondering if this town council can write into the county council and su- support, say, you know, that we support this project, um, and basically get on with it, you know, you know.
I can't, can I say that lastly, that is why, or should I totally agree with you, that is why we're having these meetings, like the next five weeks?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
To bring you more information in.
I don't have any questions.
Can I suppose that we actually check those details and that the couns-, uh, that we write to the county, county council questioning what, what is happening, if they've got the money?
The council, Mr Chairman, is it, is it Roxton?
What, the county council? It's all the highway stuff, isn't it, or? It made me wonder why the two was on the planning committee at our age.
I'm doing a joke, really.
And then I've got one of the things, that's all right.
Um, all, do we have a second for that? Uh, yep. Um, do we have all in favour, please, Mr Chairman, through you? I think that I do, thank you very much for that one.
And then the next bit I've got, um, I don't know if everyone's seen, I've put the paperwork up there, the, um, consultation which started the other day for double yellow lines on Brookhill Street, it's, it's, it's not the whole of Brookhill Street to be double yellow lined. I've been told someone's going around with a petition and it's confusing people, because they think the sign meant to stop double yellow lines going on Brookhill Street. That's, that's not what the proposal is, it's the actual junctions. This is something that we've been arguing for for, what?
Twenty years.
Lots of years.
We're, 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 I actually, no, the person who's taken it round, I had a slight discussion with her when they got off the tram there, yeah. Slight discussion, I tried to explain to her, she, she's going round, it, as, as councillor McCrory, as you said, she's tried to say to everyone that, that she's got two petitions going round, but she's tried to explain to her, she wants no yellow lines whatsoever, double yellers round the junctions, or she wants them reduced. So I said, I'm not saying who the lady is, because I wasn't, well, look, Flower, I says, we've been trying to get, we've been trying to get restrictions and safety things done on that street for years. We wanted one way, we've done this, we've done that. And she went all about it, I said, well, that's fair enough. And she said, are you supporting it? I said, no, I said, because I want it. Light, Ash Grove and all the way down, so people could see. I says, wait, and she went off on one anyway, I said, well, anyway, I'll let you carry on.
I'll finish now, thank you. Yeah, so, I've put the thing up there, it's not brilliant, because I ain't got a brilliant printer, I'm, I'm a poor. But, um, it's what John just said, it's the streets that haven't been done, and it's where, I, I'm gonna click on Yodle again here, because they've been parking on the corners, we're all having problems with them, and, and all the delivery companies as well. Um, again, is it something that we all support, and if we do, can we write into whoever's on that thing up there and say as a town council that it's something that we support?
It was a chairman's problem, if you wish me to write a quote on your past quoting that, it's not a problem. I, I say, I've been here just for twenty years, and I'm, and it's one thing I've been listening to for, you know, twenty years. Uh, in all administrations, I shouldn't have thought the town council would have had any objections to that.
Can I let you finish then?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just add to that, and I've got to go to the evening person, seen my comments already, um...
Yeah, I've got to start wearing the shop suit apparently.
Yeah, but, um, no, I, my view is that the whole thing, if you're parking on a junction, you're parking against what is recommended. Although it's not illegal to meet somebody stupid, and if people have been parking more sensibly in the first place, there wouldn't have been a problem. Um, the only thing I do find rather strange on the thing is the fact that it says, um, lines on Blake Road, which is a junction with Brookhill.
Fuck, it's going in the original or something.
Which I find is a bit peculiar. But other than that, I, I do find it pretty strange, I've got that around my neck.
It doesn't say that on there, does it?
I think it finally does, doesn't it?
I have read it, I've just forgotten.
Yeah, but, um, no, I'm all in favour, I think it's, I think it's sad that we have to reduce them, be reducing the fact that we've got to persuade people to park sensibly and have to force them to do it, because if people won't park sensibly, I'm all in favour of it, and I'm always happy. And any junction, if people are going to be sitting off, well, I'm okay.
So you're right.
So I'm just quite happy with this, well, that.
Mr Chairman, so you have...
I'm trapped questioning whether they mean by Blake Road junction, I think they mean to have a lane, but...
Right, Mr Chairman, so can you take it that everyone's happy with it, waiting on your behalf in support of this proposal?
H S two.
Mr Chairman, right, H S two.
Um, it might be worth, sorry.
Yep.
We've got, can I just, for you, we've got two bits. One thing that we've got down there is H S two safety review announcement. Uh, I wasn't able to get to the meeting, but we got our route announcement. I don't know, did anybody from here actually get there, because I know Richard was a few months, I checked it either go.
Yeah, no, probably the same as last time.
Right, and we, and we also felt that there was something that was going to affect in Stapford. In between time, and we've got...
Oh, you've got some as well.
Uh, we've got a copy first, and many people have. Is what all these management managers do great strategy. I wonder if it might be worth, depending what members think, taking that with part of the local plan, as part of the local plan, or if they want to just mention that now. I'll either open it.
No, I was gonna ask something on this, actually, if that's all right, because I, I was gonna say, okay, the people have written, because it is a big thing, isn't it? We sent the link out, sorry, the tag, I sent the link out a little bit. Um, and I was also gonna say, because I've been talking to other people in different areas, and I know H S two's toted insideings, but if you look at this thing here, I think, to me, it looks like the one forced everything through Stapford. And it's, it's probably one of the biggest things that many of us around the table are ever gonna do as councillors. It, it really is, it's that serious. And, and I, I mentioned this to some of the people down at Roxton, and if, if people are backing on this one, I think we, we need to set up a Stapford H S two working group and invite H S two to come along and talk, because it's that much stuff. If we start doing it now, we're gonna be here till this time next week, it's massive. We do need to do it, but it needs to be just purely that. And, and I think if we've got a working group, again, you know, anybody could come, but if it's representative and don't get any offence, we can crack on with it, because otherwise we're gonna miss out on so much.
Right, there's two ways of doing this, Mr Chairman. You can form a working group, as you say, to deal with it, um, or you can call a special meeting of the town council, it's up to yourself.
So I think a working group, because it keeps going, this is years to come, and when, when there's a lot, are probably not councillors anymore, you know, hopefully I am, but, you know, um... What I mean, no, what I mean is, we're not getting any younger, and whoever takes over from us, let them keep that group going, because this is a thirty year project, we need to be saying no, no. It's people like my daughter and stuff like that, that's gonna, it's gonna affect us a lot, not really.
Right, Mr Chairman, I propose to set up a working group, I think you don't want to come in before we...
Well, I'll second that.
Not what, can we let the leaders speak to the board?
All right, I'm, I'm, I'm again, um, but just very quickly, um, I think it's very sensible, because it's going to be ongoing, and I think it is, as councillor McCrory says, very sensible idea. I think the other thing is, I don't think we're not so much just getting H S two, this document's been produced by D two N two. And I think it's, I think we should get a meeting, we, what we should be doing is getting that working group, um, requesting a meeting with D two N two, and requesting that we, that we're entitled to send somebody for their meetings.
Now, I, I go to their meetings anyway, and they're really breakfast, but it'd be nice to get them to come to the meetings that are here.
Yes. Well, okay, so, Richard, that's fine, I think we should be getting them here as well. That's not at the same time, but get them to come and explain what all this is about. And that we need to be consulted.
Because, because one of the things in here, I, I've got to be careful, because I'm on planning at Roxton, I'll be careful.
They're taking all the time.
I'm not all about that.
Oh, I said that.
No, no, at the minute, is outline planning permission being granted for, I'll say Exman, because I can never remember his name. A lot of houses behind George Spencer, and I'll call it St. for their point, to the man right. And then what I'm saying is, they also, they've got outline planning. If I'm right, there's a, um, a detailed planning, but it hasn't been discussed yet, so I'm not gonna say anything about that, because it is what it is. But this, to me, just goes on top of that. And if you look at this, they want to move George Spencer School, they want to put a new leisure centre up there, so it makes you think, what's gonna happen with Brandyford? They wanna build roundabouts all over Day Fifty Two, they want to force, I'll say, force all the traffic down Reservoir to get into it, if you look at this map. And if you're gonna, is it Bank Road or Toton, something you're already saying this, if you drive along there, it's a nice little roundabout at the top, and a little road on that would go straight into the H S two station. Apparently, because it's Toton, you know, right, Brandyford, you can't do things like that, so they don't want to do it. And if you look on everything, it's like, everything's, I mean, the good thing is, if they're doing this, we might get rid of the speed limits, but, yeah, you know, I gotta be careful.
Remember, you're planning.
I think, Chair, what we all probably don't realise, as Richard said, is, this is massive for Stapford and wherever. The problem is that it'll cause a lot of problems in Stapford.
But it's actually Stanton as well, we've also told them to build Stanton.
I won't worry about Stanton, mate, we represent Stadler, right? So, the point being, is that yes, we do need a proper group setting up. We also need to be recognised, right, that we are, um, I have to question the planning and policy, right, that we are recognised as councillors with other groups into what we need to be achieving for Stapford. Because this, to me, is too big, right, without people communicating with each other, because the housing and all that. We need to be involved to get young people trained, educated and involved in everything, instead of pulling it away. And we need to be all in it together. Because in my eyes, and I'm not on planet, right, the bottom end of Stapford, and I think the, and that includes the allotments, will be wiped out. So we need to look at, no, I'm busy, no, I'm not saying, I'm not being careful. Think about what I'm saying, because I've looked, right, at the Channel Tunnel. The Channel Tunnel is now off as big as Eiffel. Now, them junctions up there, that the proposal is there, right, are two little road junctions, right? So where is the rest of it gonna go? So everybody in this town, that includes schools and everybody, we need to get the group and formulate what we want for our families and everything else. And it's no good, Chair, no good, we need to approach them proper, sensibly and tell them that the people of Stapford, Toton apparently are involved, and I didn't know until I read this, we need to be involved in this. For the future rankings and everything else, and that's true. Sorry, Chair.
Uh, councillor Brown, so in terms of our, so, in terms of our, uh, this group include lots of public, it's not just that.
Well, Mr Chairman, just the technicality, if the town council wants to form a working group, it has to be a town council, right? If you want to hold an open meeting to discuss the public, that is not a problem, but your working group needs to be the town council.
Well, people can approach us and stuff like that, do for traffic transport, otherwise you have all the Stapford in here.
You could invite people that have, Mr Chairman, you could invite people to come along to speak to our council or to the working group, but it wouldn't be any group of the working group.
They could do what we're talking about with the local plan, couldn't we? We could have an open meeting, like you said, where people can come and talk to us, and we can tell them our ideas, and they can tell us what we're doing.
You wouldn't talk for this specific, um, neighborhood plans different, because you had to involve the community, that was part of the locality reason. This is purely, the town council's a statutory consultancy, for what that means these days, would, is forming its own working group to discuss it, to formulate ideas. You could hold open meetings and invite members of the public to come along and think up what they're saying, but not as members of your...
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Chair, I, I, through, because I worked on the railway, right, I realised how big this will be, and I've been trying to get onto H S two to come and talk to us, as Richard has, but over four, three, four years now, it's about time we did, and we need to realise that.
Mr Chairman, I have been on to H S two on a new occasion. Councillor Pearson was with me when I spoke to H S two at a previous open day, and Councillor Pearson spoke to us as well.
I'm all right, not being disrespectful, this is respectful, I was weird, they just liked it, they couldn't even answer the question.
Can we, we have a proposal, has we got a second there? Yeah, right, that's fine. You want me to organise a working party? I will organise a working party and get back to you.
With tea biscuits.
With the tea biscuits.
Well, Chair, just a quick, and I also asked Roxton Borough to do it as well, but involve the set all of it. Because we, we've just been pushed aside, we're no part of the councillors, but Toton, right, seemed to have took over, and everything's in their plan, no to do with me, like, I'm in Stadler, they took over the plan.
Mr Chairman, the council pieces of where I have spoken to Roxton Borough councillors regarding this event, as borough councillors, you have a lot more clue than I do. I'm usually speaking to Mr Hyde and to Mr Saunders, asking them, yeah, asking them to include the town council.
Yeah, no, to be, to be fair, I, I went to that policy and performance thing the other week, because I know the town clerk, and David's the leader, wrote some big words for us to read out, but I let John in, it was easier. And he, he did actually speak up for the town council, I'm not gonna say other councillors, they may have said no, because I don't wanna say that, they're not here. But John did speak up for that, and I think they did say they're gonna try and get others involved and whatnot, so we do need to do our own thing, you know.
I will refer, Mr Chairman, and I will, I'll formally, I will speak with the leader after this meeting, and we'll probably go into the best time to hold it. I thought the proportionality would be for Roxton, okay? But people, also that people can come, um...
Yeah, that's the fairest way to do it, isn't it? Because some people can't get, you know.
Councillor, man.
Yeah, just very quickly, so, let's set up that working group, because as far as I'm concerned, not only does Roxton, and it's about doing this, I'm fully aware that the Toton Forum and their neighbourhood plan have been in regular communication with D two N two secretly, and with their Roxton councillors. So I think the best way forward is, as we've just agreed, we set up that working group, and it's up to us to drive that forward, not waiting for Roxton to do it, because it's obvious that Roxton have been doing things by certain of their councillors, and their forum, and probably our M P. And I don't know. This has been going on since they set up the Toton Forum, uh, so it's up to us to drive it forward, and put pressure on those people. And let's get that working group going, and that making down.
I stopped being a monger for hours.
No, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking that, um, H S, H S two actually, H S two actually hopes to meet the chief executive of Stapford City Council, so...
We don't, you're not getting a promotion, you're not...
I'm sitting my day off. What's the order, can we move on, please?
These documents are available for you.
Yeah, I think if council people would like to copy that document, I think that's a good start. We've got enough there in the morning.
The, the, the actual, do you know if anyone wants to put the hard copy up there, the company that's printing, they're sending me some, so I'll bring one down here. If anyone, I can get some more, I think if anyone wants to send me one.
Anybody?
For London to leave.
That's, that's, yeah, on.
I've got all that. I've already, I've parked a load of things out as well, so I'll be on that.
Because I think that gives the big time to read through it.
Yeah, but, yeah, you, you, yeah, you need to read it and look at it, and look what, what the proposal, you, you've got to...
I think we want to go on this way, sure.
If anyone, Mr Chairman, that wants to be on it, can you email me and let me know, please?
Correspondence.
Yes, Mr Chairman, at this point, we have, we have a correspondence, could I suggest, could I suggest take seventy items?
I've got some correspondence actually.
You can report correspondence and letters, be nice, I'm sorry, Chair.
No, I wanna hand it in, that's all. So I've got a request here for section one eighty one thirty seven.
Right, just give it to the board, discuss it.
Is that one? And then here, I've got a letter here, which, I, I've already spoke to the leader about this, I've been given it off Roxton Youth Homeless. They actually said they handed one in on the seventeenth of July around that time to the mayor, addressed to Chris Rice, and they printed two more out, they said they'd give it, not give it here, they said it'd come here for you.
And I'll take correspondence, the correspondence, report correspondence that's came in, and I have to tell them, if you've got letters for me, can you give them to me?
Well, ones, ones for the mayor, and this is not for David to read, and they're...
Can you give them to me after the meeting?
Well, I'm handing it in now, because they actually said they handed it in on the seventeenth, and I haven't had it responded.
So if you can...
Pass them down, they're open, so you can have a read if you want, Chris.
Can we?
But they said you handed it on the seventeenth of July, and I wondered why you hadn't applied to them. They said it came here for you. to them, they said it came here for you.
Yeah, okay, but if you need it.
I'm, I'm glad you've found the envelopes, if you're, if you're...
There's two there, one for you and one for Chris.
All right.
That's what I'm saying, so I've got my...
Keep going.
Move on, then. Forty before.
That, that will be able to afford the writers.
You see, these two items that have been moved, to it, please, at this point, yeah, they will have a break, yeah.
All right.
We're having a break.
Well, just do, if we can do this, I can understand, then I've just suggested that we don't have a level break, with my back to it.
Right, Mr Chairman, I have in front of you, um, a report that Craig from Rockstone Borough very kindly put forward regarding the cemetery, now, actually, it is a major, um, project taking...
Do we, can we, you've got some spare ones, the members of the public alike have them, or just the rest, I don't know.
Mr Chairman, if you supply for members of the council, if anyone wants to see them on the property...
I've just got, put the spare ones on the end, they want to pick them up, cut the range, the range, grab that off.
If we could get our, this is a major project which Rockstone Borough Council have been undertaking with regards to cemetery chapel, selected building, and these are the ones that spent on it, there's nearly two hundred thousand spent on it to date. They have approached, Rockstone Borough have approached the town council, asking to be part of this project, and the leader has some details for you.
Yeah, um, basically, this is great, I'm here, I'm going for the reasons, um...
Read it, of course, not down.
I'm not, I'm trying to, um, but Craig's also written this as a sort of summary, which I'll, for some reason, agreed that I've got allowed it for, um, but basically what he's written, sorry, I have to, I have to keep looking down, councillor Craig, to my guide paper.
I bet you did.
Um, but basically, at this moment, this is what he's written to us, and he's done that there is not the appetite for further expenditure on refurbishment of this site for public use, it's difficult to see the site become a profitable, sustainable commercial exercise regarding the investment required. Environmental heritage in Stapleford suffered with developments locally in accordance with sites lost to future generations. Cemetery Chapel is great to list it, and a present town of the buildings at risk register. Despite Rockstone Borough Council refurbishing aspire to new roofs, removing extensions and replacing belt, ashlar blocks, and brick, that's a, quickly, stone bricks at the bottom. Going forward, the windows need refurbishment, there are many more bricks and ornate ashlar blocks to repair, the work completed as mentioned before offers hope that success is, and this has been a succession stopping third year application, there is an urgent need to stabilise the belt following an inspection, it has been identified that the iron securing bolts are corroding, and as they expand, they will fracture the belts. Rectification work will go ahead and will be funded by Rockstone Borough Council at cost of £1,581. This is from Craig, not me, both. I am asking state town councillors to consider providing additional finance and support to reactivate the belt, so they can once again ring daily, and twelve belts at midday, uh, you'll see that, at the end of the document, the additional cost as for John Taylor Bell's rotation, preferred option, is £6,747. The positive press may attract new interest and bigger, which may, I think he means publicity, the positive publicity may attract new interest, and leads to chapel being used again, in nothing else, it would also be a substantial contribution to the ongoing works to secure this site and its heritage, and the bell sounding once again would be a major milestone. Press and social re, re, social media releases will be under by Rockstone's press offices, but it would be seen as a joint venture, for example, Rockstone's recent refurbishment aspire, and tenement state for town council, which refurbished the bell. So, I would like to take this opportunity to invite state town councillors to view the cemetery chapel, could you wish that you have to arrange that with Craig at a suitable time, I've been up there with councillor Craig, um, unfortunately, can't put the belt at the spike at the top and come here there, um, so, perhaps, having read that, I could just also perhaps say a few things, it's thirty years, thirty years, you know, so, it's a wonderful idea to get the thing working again, and I think it would be a wonderful thing for the town, to actually get something done about that, and to get that then, would be a wonderful thing, and do it within the thirty years, and I agree with Craig, I think that if we actually got something like that going, it might be able to encourage investment from other, other groups to actually help refurbish the rest of the thing. The other thing is that, as you said when we had the discussion earlier this week, it might encourage, as we've got friends of Bradford Church, that we might be able to get some other groups put together for the Friends of Stapleford, remember its chapel or whatever, that we could get a group that would stop to do those things as well, um, so I really would like to try and get this going, uh, I'm sure the town clerk, I've asked the town clerk to look at some finance things, um, we obviously can't just instantly do £6,747, however, I think there are means that perhaps over the next five, hundred year, that we may be able to do that, um, I haven't, I haven't had time to go through the figures with, but I know Margaret's had lots of things, got some ideas, how we could actually go forward to start with, um, but I think it would be a wonderful thing if we could actually get together and do some time, as a nice historic thing, and it would be a wonderful year to do it, um...
Do you want to stick comments in, I'll come in?
Yes, then, then you perhaps say, what I do is, you and I have discussed about the five years.
Thank you, Mr Brown, looking at, looking at this, I took a preview of what the leader of the council has said in the bell, uh, certainly, um, over items, uh, of, of their need, obviously replacing and strengthening, I would agree with the leader, I think that the council, um, and the town clerk and leader of the council looking at the project, I'm hoping that the week after, the Friday of the project, and then can go on the next agenda with the council, um, so that we can, um, discuss this further, so I'm hoping it will go on, on the, um, on, on the agenda for the February article, it must be.
No, we can pull that to the chair.
Oh, January.
Yeah, no, I think it's brilliant, and it's, it's long past done, the bell, I know a little bit about it, because Lorraine's quite clever, one of the people at the end of the gala, so she's been telling me a little bit, some bother and that, but the actual cemetery chapel, whatever you want to call it, was given to the people of Stapleford in eighteen eighty, so I imagine the people of Stapleford own it, and the money we've got is the people of Stapleford's money, and obviously, I can't speak for everyone in Stapleford, and there's probably people who are saying, no, but I think it's brilliant, and I think it's something we should do, it would be nice if we had the whole lot, and we went, and it were done, and it's ringing, and see Chris swinging on that rope, and the bells up and down, but, uh, I don't know if that's something we can do, that, the money's your, your debt, well, there you go, there's the next, you're the experts in that, or, yeah, anything that we can do, there is a group called Friends of Stapleford Cemetery that was, it was very loosely put together, and it was like litter picking and stuff, but that can be, the idea was to make that drop up, and, and support things like this, like they've done with the, uh, Suckin Church and Rattle, or any call it, so there is people interested, and, you know, you can do things like go to fundry pages eventually, I don't mean start on tomorrow, because that would just be silly, but it's things that can be looked at via a group, and, and chuck some money, and because, I mean, I've had a few people in Stapleford, but you need more than a few that's willing to put a few quid in, you know, um, so anything that we can do to get the ball rolling, I think it's brilliant, because it was given to us, and we, we need to make sure we look after it, and it's there for years to come.
Thanks, very quickly, the, the chapel was needed, it was needed to whoever was particular borough type in perpetuity, in perpetuity, so, town council, in, in this, this town council that's event, that's event with cemetery, so, it's borough council's responsibility for that, it's the borough council's responsibility, and they invite the town council to be part of this important project, and of course, I'm always coming, Mr Chairman.
Councillor Brown. I'm just saying, I think it's a, what, there's a fantastic goal, it's thirty anniversary, if we've got the money to do it, you can, that's part of the money, let's just, we'll just do it, right?
Uh, Mr Chairman, very quickly...
Councillor Brown. I'm just thinking, Rockstone people are very local to, uh, hear about it.
By a bell, I mean.
Mr Chairman, that, the people of the borough council, to, to the, to discuss, but that has to do with the Toton, the Toton council has been invited to be part of this project out of the quick little, with the, uh, leaders' question, you've got to pay, the several wishes and finances, you could give them some money, I can say from 137, there's not all of there, but there will, I think, be someone else at the end of the year, two, you could set up a budget head, when you look at your budget in January, to cover finance towards it, and you could raise that through your pre-setter, through the, um, your reserves, three, there may be finance left within the, um, ring event sum you have for neighbourhood planning, but if there is finance left in that at the end of the neighbourhood plan, that money would go back into reserve, however, you could, as a council earmark that towards this project, there is also £1,685 within the, um, ring event sum for regeneration, that would be a possibility, because you're looking at, and it's a project to raise the, um, profile of the town, and hopefully bring some, possibly some profitability to people coming to the town, tourism, be it for historical interest, um, so that would be another budget heading that you have, that would be for yourselves to decide that there are ways to raise funding for it.
Move on, actually.
Margaret, I, 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 I'll support this, but first of all, could we please also bring Rockstone Borough on, guys, and don't take it to councillors, because we've got Rock... Well, no, 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 but I mean, we need to take it from Rockstone, are they supporting?
Clarification here, yes, I've, I've had a long conversation with the chief executive, and she is delighted, the town council would be interested in being part of this project, but the borough council has spent something in the region of £175,000, and they're already in renovating this chapel.
And they've also done this one, this, that, that, no, no, Chair, no, so, Chair, no, no, what I'm saying is, right, I don't want Stapleford to be took along the line again, right, let us make sure that we get the right funding, they're still proper, that's what I'm saying, Chair, because, Chair?
Yes.
Right, I had another argument two weeks ago, right, about what went on with the road closures, so I'd like to make sure that Stapleford gets the right assistance, please, right, so we need to know, as councillor Brown said before, that everything, don't look at David, tell you the truth, I want to know what assistance we're getting, I want it done properly, please.
Mr Chairman, we are not getting any of this.
No, I want them to put some money into it.
No, no, listen to me, John.
No, I want a bit more.
John, this is a Rockstone Borough council project, if you look in your...
Well, they're asking, no, they're asking us to fund it again, or not?
No, they're not, Mr Chairman, Mr Chairman, Rockstone Borough council have already funded this project, the sum of £175,000 or there is...
So it's not coming out of our budget?
They are now asking the town council to be involved in the project, and to give what they can up to a maximum of £6,500,000 to, to renovate the bell.
Up to a maximum?
Yeah.
And it's up to you if you want to fund it, or part of it.
No, I totally supported, no, but, up to a maximum, I'm not having this town, again, another argument two weeks ago, Margaret, I want to make sure everything's done proper, I don't want Rockstone to be taking the money.
Sorry, in that, it's like you said, up to a maximum, so if we can, they call two thousand, they would renovate it, we still have progress, they would need, Mr Chairman, if you said all you, if you could buy two K, um, then it was two thousand pounds towards the project, then you would need to find the money somewhere else, if they don't find the money somewhere else, the bell will need to be taken out because it's dangerous.
Mm.
If the work isn't done within the next fifteen, fourteen months, it will, you'll lose that bell. Well, the same question, so, is it six and a half thousand to get the bell open on?
Four, seven, it's on a, it's a bit, oh, seven, it's on a...
It's six, seven, four thousand.
Yeah, because it's about seven thousand pounds, basically, we need to know how they're going to give it, and how much we've got.
No, you, no, 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 the project is a Rockstone Borough council project that they are working on, they have already spent £175,000 on renovation, there's still a lot already being done, they've earmarked the bell, and they have invited the town council to be part of this project, to put money into it, hope, they're looking, hope that you would want to fund the renovations of the bell, then it would say Stapleford Town Council has paid for the renovation of this bell tomorrow, say or seventy thousand.
Chair, which they get money off the government, they get money off the government to do that.
No, 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 it's actually, this, the, the only way this bell is going to be funded for renovation work is if the town council or someone else comes on board and pays for it, otherwise it will go.
That's it, that's all, that's all I've just said.
Bit like the flowers.
Absolutely.
They are your baskets, yeah.
Can I just, the thing, the, there are two sort of things that need doing, the other half of the chapel needs renovating, that's why, I've been in love with it, and the other half needs done, the thing is, that if we can get the money together somehow to do the bell, all the money can be invested on re, on doing the other half of the chapel, if that bell isn't done, I would suspect that what will happen is, they will use the, the money will go to refund in the chapel, and the bell will be gone forever.
That's how that is.
It does, they cannot get money from the government for those sorts of things.
Please, I'm, I'm, I'm just wanting, in Rockstone Borough, we have some concerns about...
They are, they are, they will be spotting money in anyway, it's not us just doing that side.
As a little contribution.
As a little bit, and we're looking at the bell itself as a one-off project, so it's not a bottomless pit, it's the bell, and then Rockstone can put, can look at the other half of the chapel, which needs, still needs an awful lot done on it, you can see how nice one half looks, the other half is a mess, so that means that we've done our little bit, and we can say, this is what Stapleford wants to do for the town and for the heritage of the town.
Chair, all I'm saying is that Nuttall, Kidley, and all the rest of them...
Well, let's...
And that's what I'm trying, all I'm trying to say, it needs to be in writing, so we all know what's going on.
You have the...
No, that, well, that makes a difference to me.
Mr Chairman, the documentation is there explaining the project.
Yeah, there's plenty of documentation.
This is specifically about Stapleford, this is nothing to do with any of the other towns in Rockstone, this is purely a project that's being undertaken with regards to that listed chapel building in the cemetery.
Chair, I must have two weeks ago that we could have applied for a grant, and we didn't bother doing it.
We can't apply anything for this.
I don't know what, what, talk to me, the...
It's about moving my rounds on it.
And, so, yes, we're all on the deal, but we'd like to see it, so, basically, um, have you had any chance to look at the figures, or basically, you've got them, when we, when we...
Right, Mr Chairman, I, I've told you basically where money could be found from, until the neighbourhood plan is completed, we don't know how much will be left, but it's, then possibly, possibly will be money left in that, we have £1,685, new generation, we will have some money left at the end of the financial year in section 137, possibly, what you can do is, at your budget meeting in January, you can make specific allocations if you wish to, or you can say you want to pledge so much towards it now, and what you can, you can straddle this financial year and the next financial year, so you could take a specific budget heading and raise finance in the next budget for us as well.
So, what basically, what boiled down to is, if we're all in agreement to it, it's come up in January, when, when we've got money coming, such a line.
Right, you can pledge some of it now, you can say you're going to wait till January and you're part of the budget process, and straddle over two financial years, that, you, I can't tell you that, you have to make your decisions.
Well, we'll, we'll have a hat, when, you know, if we've got the money, if we've got the money now, we'll be sent to Rockstone, yes, you know, we're out on the money.
They're working on the project at the moment.
As soon as...
As soon as there's really at least two, before we end of the thirtieth anniversary.
Well, we can straddle two, now, let's go on, do you know, to me, if we have an idea or we want to go on with it, we can do it, yeah, we, yeah, if you want.
Councillor Brown.
No, all I was going to say then, so, if I proposed that, in principle, we support this, and then perhaps it would make sense to do it at the budget thing, instead of passing around the money now, if, if that, if someone wants to second that, and then vote on it, whatever, I, I just, well, it's easier, because then when you've got all the money around the table, and you're dealing with it all together, we can move this around, and we might be able to give them more than...
we can move this around and we might be able to give them more than if we do something now, it's only a few months away, isn't it? If someone wants to second that and.
I can, can you bring the other people up to the end?
Yeah, I said earlier on, uh, Mr Mayor, that I suggested that let's go to the, obviously to the budget initiative, to the councils, get on the, the proper agenda and hopefully we can get it cleared up, get it sorted and get that bell running again.
Yeah.
Council President. Um, yeah, I mean, I'm looking to, Council Manager, proposal. Um, what I'd like to do is propose a sort of, to do with budget but also to do with the funding. What I'd like to propose is that firstly, we can allocate, we allocate now, that one thousand six hundred and seventy-five has been, one, all right, eighty-nine, um, has been sat in that regeneration fund for God knows how long. So I'd like to propose, I mean, we can't, that needs to be done on a particular fund, because it really depends. So I'd like to propose firstly that we agree to allocate that money anyway, that one six eight five. Um, I don't know anything else that can be spent on in the town, but to me it seems good, a good use of it, darling, just sit there. Secondly, I'd like to propose that we look to set up some sort of thing from the budget. Um, obviously I have looked at the budget, but I'd like to suggest that we set up some sort of, what if the, what would we call it, Margaret? Um, but.
It would be a budget.
But set up a budget item.
But it would be a, Mr Chairman.
Bell, for, for the, seventy bell, but we set up an item on the budget and that I look at that, to the January budget. And thirdly, I'd like to suggest that we sort of agree now that if, as we suspect, there is a considerable amount of money left from the neighbourhood plan fund, that we, that any shortfall, we make up with whatever is left over from that regen, from that neighbourhood plan. Because that money, again, as far as I'm concerned, a neighbourhood plan, the state for doing something for heritage is part of neighbourhood plan, so we could equally use that. And I would hope that in those three ways we could make that money up.
I'll second what they've just said, scrap the noise, yeah, yeah, get rid of mine.
Sorry it's complicated, but I want to get something.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, I can move that together. Can I just, um, advise you that the grants for locality can only be used for neighbourhood planning, but forget about that. But that's the first funding I will use to pay for neighbourhood planning. Whatever's left at the end of the neighbourhood plan fund will be used.
We're not written the belt to announce a neighbourhood plan, then we could tie into that, or we're all not.
Right.
It's gone, isn't it?
We've got, we have a proposal, we have a statement there, don't, I'm taking, don't say it all again. Can I ask all in favour?
Thank you.
Anyone against? Anyone abstaining?
None.
All right, thank you very much for that, we're going to take a short.
We're not limited, but it was unanimous as well.
Yes, we're limited, yeah, it will be. Uh, Mr Chairman, can I ask you, will you take a short recess for our conference?
Margaret, sorry, can't finish that, can, can we please write it straight and say thank you? If this is really good what he's done, I should thank him for his ideas.
We're taking a short recess and the conference is all for people today.
I appreciate that.
Yes, great.
My bad, yeah. I've been dead self except for I need to, to.
I just want to give five points.
Just under that, I've just read this bit actually. Community safety.
Yeah.
Brockstow will be a safe place where crime is under control. People do not have to live in fear. Tell that to the woman and her.
Tell that to all those people. Tell us what we have to go to now.
Yeah, and there are fewer accidents on the roads under home. I like that. Where crime is under control and people do not have to live in fear.
We got to have special meetings.
Yeah.
So I must say that you're questioning that particular power.
Both of those two.
We've had two public meetings with the police with a lot of not happy people. You know, and, and, and.
You may have heard of the police. Then I'm definitely going to be up to pace.
Yeah, I'm not going to copy this, but so if I did it, Mr Chairman, that you're saying regarding community safety and what has been read out, that you would recognise this?
No. We've got to say there's something, there's no evidence.
Is that the question?
Can't find it. This is a plan for the future, isn't it, rather than what's happened? It's very brave to say it will be.
Yes.
It can hopefully.
Quite.
So, Mr Chairman, would you like to see, you've seen the evidence of this?
So far. Obviously no evidence that it's been put in here, because this is the local plan, Mark Two.
So you want the half covered too, but how are they going to get there?
Quite. The next bit, just bear with me, but I'm sorry about this delay.
Katie's just trying to do this.
Page fourteen. Let's talk about the main built-up area. Stay with me, I've got to follow my. The main built-up area will be expanded with allocations. Right, the next bit. That's really talking about the allocations of Bramford, which is mentioned further along, so I'll try and cut that out. The next bit that I highlighted that referred particularly to Stapleford is, just cast your eye down, Richard, whilst you've got the other topic, while I try and pick out where it is. It says growth is provided for at Eastwood and Stapleford, which are in need of regular regeneration.
What page is that near?
That's what I'm trying to find. It's about fourteen or fifteen. See if you can spot it, Richard.
Well, fourteen, you said, is where you're doing it.
Yes. Just a moment. Apologies for this. I didn't realise the expectation. Oh, I see where it is. It's on the right hand side somewhere. I say remove that since they printed it again. Now, it's about halfway down page fifteen. A major priority is to re, it's on the right hand side. Major priority is to redevelop the former seven train side conduction direction. And then it says growth is also provided for at Eastwood and Stapleford, which are in need of regeneration. I don't know when that, what they mean by growth. I presume that just means five hundred hours or?
It's not Japanese, not with numbers or anything.
Yeah, growth is, well, we know it's needed, but it says it's provided for. I don't see anything here, having gone through this old document, that says where they're providing it for.
Chairman, clarification, growth made on?
That's on page fifteen.
Main built-up area, is this growth in terms of housing units or growth in terms of?
It does not say. That is the problem with this whole plan. It's full of.
It's simple, it's a pot of pan.
So nothing, good time.
So, Mr Chairman, with my first reading, it seems, it looks like the overall thing of this is, it's a lot of words, but no no research.
Yes.
Lovely words.
As it's very clearly, that's why I'm asking for clarification.
If you wrote that as an essay, I'll teach you to say, where's your evidence?
Precisely. And that's what I'm questioning.
I'm not sure, uh, leader, that, um, obviously your numbers of pages are different from the ones that you printed out.
No.
Regarding.
Yours is the same as mine.
Expanding, expansion, this is, it's covered on page nine, and it, and it, obviously covered at the core structure.
Yeah.
But we do not have any information in it regarding numbers or where. And they've left a lot of areas out, uh, leader.
Precisely.
If you're not aware.
But, Mr Chairman, again, on clarification, Stapleford is part of what they call the main built-up area, and unfortunately have not allocated any numbers for the areas within the main built-up area. So for your own clarification, you're working blind here.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Sorry, leader.
Never come back, Paul.
Yeah. They've actually altered the wording on the next bit, because he said they provided expensive consultation. And he now says, following consultation, that the advice from various providers. I don't see that we had much consultation. We had sort of workshops with various event went to. And I didn't call that a consultation, because there was no voting, and no and no minutes, because we never got any problem. So I would dispute the fact that they've actually consulted, got into page sixteen. And page sixteen, part ten. It's like this. Excellent transport system and reducing the need to travel to ensure access to jobs, leisure and services is improved in a sustainable way. Reducing the need to travel, especially by private car. By encouraging convenient and reliable transport systems.
Perhaps they mean where they've extended the eighteen.
They haven't done the eighteen.
Round Beeston, but not in Stapleford.
Yeah. Um, I think that is an absolute joke. And as we know, all the transport systems are provided by private companies, so how are they going to do it? They're not going to be going on to Simon Barman saying, hello, can we do this?
Uh, page six, no point five.
But, Mr Chairman, can we, we're jumping around here.
Well, I'm trying to go through it.
From number pages online.
Uh, is this on the same page?
Yes, yes, yes. This is.
Item ten on page sixteen, and David's, of yours, David, it would be page fourteen, item ten.
Then it comes under, it comes under portfolio locations, uh, and then it talks about the buses. But where do people get to, uh, employment, um, on these buses? If the buses are not there, being provided, and, and, and the county are already threatening to get rid of them.
And the other bit, it says on the other side of the page. The approach taken to Simon's election ensures that new housing development is focused in locations accessible to jobs, services and facilities. Of course, we know Coventry Lane's got loads and loads of facilities around it. Um, where they want to build. New employment development is provided in accessible locations. Is provided? Where?
Where, yeah.
So, I, I find it just, yeah. Um, and I am conscious of the time, so do please, if you haven't, read these off bits.
No foundation, David, is it?
No. Right, the next bit is about Bramford building east of Coventry Lane, the two sites. To the east, one very close to the crematorium. It's page by Richard, it's page thirty-two. It's generally about four pages off from the ones I've got. The site of Landbruck at east of Coventry Lane. If you've read our manual plan, we're totally against that there. There's no transport, there's no facilities, there's no employment at Coventry Lane. So to me, the idea that they want to build that side of Coventry Lane is totally against their own proposals that they've got. It's not sustainable, there's no public transport. But of course, they do own part of the land that they want to sell. Just aside the few things that they're doing for this development east of Coventry Lane, which is happening at us three hundred home, east of Coventry Lane, that's the other side. Provide enhanced green infrastructure corridors. Linking urban areas of Nottingham to the east with Bramford and Stapleford Hill. Yeah, but one of these corridors, it's a bit they want to build on. Uh, safe pedestrian crossing points, providing enhanced surrounding roads. Oh yeah, well, we've already used a term what the council are doing. Incorporate design measures to slow the speed of traffic on Coventry Lane while they reduce the speed limit, but. Yeah. Enhanced bus road routes adjacent to the site. How are they going to do that? Are they going to pay for it? Because I don't see anything in here that says they're going to put any money. So it's just not true. Mitigate high rates impact on the wider road network to ensure congestion is not made worse. So they're going to build three hundred houses one side, five hundred and fifty the other side. But there's nothing here to say that what they're going to do for them. So I just don't see what they're doing.
In my, in my intentions here, uh, leader, they're, they're saying they're not, they're going, they want to do it. And you say that there'll be no finance for it. Um, they're, they're in cuckoo land here, for the simple reason is um, it just aspirations right through the whole document.
Which I know is probably.
And, and especially when you get to the Stapleford Hilton area. It, it is laughable, I'm sorry. This, this is a file, this is, this is written by a five-year-old who did that, I think. Hopefully you can put that down anyway. But I believe this is a total waste of time and money. I know they have to do this, but we are not, we are not achieving anything by a staple foot at all.
Just bear with me, I'll help you find the next bit, it's about Stapleford.
Mr Chairman, one of the issues two of this document, you're dotting around all over the place, rather than being but have a chapter Stapleford, which would be a lot easier in terms of reading.
Yeah, but it doesn't work right now.
Yes, but it does make it very difficult.
The next of it is pages seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, which is generally about the HS two. Uh, and it's generally what's in that document. Uh, providing a new leisure centre. Uh, provide new community centre, new health centre, or a new neighbourhood scale retail centre and all this.
Not using the house.
And it's, this is all the area, up by the top of Turnpike, and it's basically what is in that document. Which I think is open to objection, because so I don't think I'm going to say anything more about that. Except there's one little section, if you can find it. It refers to retaining, right, this is on page eighty-eight. Retaining good quality employment sites. Under Stapleford, it says Carmarthen and Vessel Lane. Okay, there's nothing to arm those on.
I can't make a comment, Dave, but that would be wide chat.
Uh, Borma Diver site on West End Street. Past your own Cyril Mount tonight, New Road Industrial Estate. The one that puzzles me at the bottom.
Page on me.
Is it on page eighty-eight? Tell me where the real employment site is on Higgins Lane.
The cap off.
But that isn't, that's a shopping centre.
Pretty good, though. You can even mark, that's reasonable.
You know, I don't, this is supposed to be a major, good quality existing employment site.
Do you think they might have Simba before Simba got knocked down? Couldn't have that, couldn't they?
Maybe.
It's not there, now.
That's the only place I can think of, so. I don't know where they're talking about. They can't call a shop a good quality. Well, it is a good quality employment site, but I wouldn't call it an employment site. It's a shop.
I reckon they made Simba, but it's gone.
I think so.
Mr Chairman, if it, if you share these questions with?
If, if, if I may, uh, as the Chair, leader, um, majority of this, of this so-called document, uh, page two, uh, obviously is part of page one. Um, they've looked at the top, they've looked at Higgins Lane. There was a little bit more employment until about a year ago. Um, they haven't changed from page one to page two at all, in anything they've written.
Other than two.
Other than to try and confuse, uh, people, because, uh, when you, I'll, I'll come back to it.
With me.
Chair, sorry, could, could, could we just say that the amount of, this is, am I allowed to make a comment? The amount of mistakes we've all, yourselves found, they've all read it.
Yes.
Is it, it should be, is it a valued document? Because ours is what?
Mr Chairman, Mr Chairman.
I'm, I'm saying that.
The power of reading, the fact that the town council is concerned by the number of areas that they have.
Yeah, that's correct, because how many people make a comment when David's gone for him, and it's, it's hillbilly, hillbilly to me.
Could we, could we ask, ask them to put, say, it in a form, so it's Stapleford.
You can't do that, Mr Chairman. It has, the specific form it has to be done in, and because it's part of this built-up area, this is the problem, but it does make it very difficult for people to read. But as you can see, we're going back and forwards. As I say, you're borough councillor, you have more clout than I do, as how, as, but it is a methodology, the methodology of. Um, I can't comment on that, the borough councillors to meet that point.
Well, I didn't tell that, what was the question about?
Commissioner Brown.
Can the Rose page come in?
I don't, I don't, it's all defined, not.
Councillors have to say.
We have to define what we want in this letter, and I think we're all thinking that it's there's a lot of aspirations there, but no, no back how they're going to reach them. And also no evidence that they are doing what they're doing already. We don't have confidence when, as you say, that the, the road crossing, they don't want.
Yeah.
But there's, um, it's, where's the evidence that they're supporting it? Because they said they want to do it, but they're not doing those things now. So we don't have confidence that they're doing it in the future. Is that right?
Yes, that's really what.
It's probably bad.
Um, there's a bit of upside difference centre which they've cut down, considerable, and they're reducing the area for retail.
Chairman, could we, could we please, that's a.
That's, this is now page one hundred, state difference centre. Uh, they're reducing, they're not prepared to take the areas for shops down past Doors Road. Yeah, we know there's quite a few very good shops past Doors Road. I've not got much else to say about that, because it is so what they've actually put down is, well, it's just so vague.
But, Mr Chairman, if I can clarify, can I say that the town council is concerned with the proposal to shorten the length of the high street as the number of high quality shops?
We were assured when we were at that meeting, that, uh, made quite clear that we did not want that to happen. Stay with me a moment. Right, the next bit is policy fifteen on page one oh six. Uh, it's a lot longer, in every case, it wasn't on what they are, I call it strategy, as it says. But one of the things that concerns me. The proposals on, on allocated sites for development of more than ten unions. Affordable housing should be provided as the following proportions. Beeston, thirty percent. Stapleford, ten percent. We only want ten percent affordable housing, someone also absolutely affluent and rich that we don't need.
If only, yeah.
Why, what, for what decision tells them that Beeston can have thirty percent affordable housing? And Stapleford only ten? Funny though, Beeston's only got been allocated ten as well. And Hillby, for some reason, is twenty. Now, I don't see why there should be any great disparity. Why should it, should it be that sort of figure? Uh, uh, where, what?
Perhaps we're more pleased, eh?
Flowering to be quiet.
No, what we've, what we've been is done is that they're only wanting flooders with very close people, so we can't gain any pride.
But you're so stiff.
Or what pride there is, probably going to be high quality fraud or something of that sort. Now, I shouldn't say that, and, uh.
Allegedly.
Allegedly, yeah. We can see what I mean. I don't, I really did question that. I don't see how they justify it that big a issue. That's page one oh six. Oh, you're laughing. This is councillor Darby, you're going to laugh at that bit. Councillor Darby, you're going to laugh at it. Uh, policy twenty.
What page?
Uh, page one one nine.
One oh nine?
One one nine. Policy twenty, air quality. Air quality in Brockstow is a significant issue. Mainly because of nitrogen dioxide emissions from vehicles using M one and A two two. Large box all over this, and then it goes on about the things. Uh, air quality management areas are a tiny close to an I M O driver trial. I thought you probably could have the HS two running through.
Yeah, and no toll, yeah.
And, yes, Knockin Road, Black Lane, no toll.
Yeah.
And then it goes countrywide air quality improvement strategy. And that's what I said you'd do here. I think we should be saying, um, firstly, that it's now recognised that things like boat homes and whatever ruin the air quality. So why has there not been some sort of air quality management things on the high road?
Because the thing is, you know now we've got free wifi in St James' and we've got the kids hanging around the square. And breathing in all them fumes, so we should take the speed outside and take the kids.
If anybody, if anybody wants to sit outside a particular pub there, well, I just want to, because all we can breathe is diesel.
Yeah.
So.
Can we, please?
But I think what we need to say is, air quality, they should be looking at those sort of areas and probably um, no doubt we went to some other areas of the, of the borough, and probably other places where the homes, where they would probably say just the same as ours. Why aren't they not looking at that? Because all the congested pollution is far more, you know, congested area where the traffic's slow. But it is above tiny close to an I M O drive. I'll be down there, and it's, it's, okay, you can see the boats way right up there, but it seemed quite fine to me.
But, Mr Chairman, again, the power of reading, can I say that you are stood fresh in concern with regard to this policy um, as an air quality, and feel that Stapleford needs a proper air quality survey also? Because of weather, congestion issues, et cetera.
Point brackets, remove the speed rule. Chair, do you?
I will mention, I will mention traffic calming.
I've been very good here. Actually, the air quality is very active, pretty foreign Stapleford, if you know what I mean. But you see, we have to think, we have to think about the future as well, for the simple reason is that we are getting more traffic on our road, Knockin Road, Jarro Road, Toggen Lane, everywhere. And now we have to think about the future, which they're supposed to be looking after us. Uh, HS two, it's going to be worse than ever. So air quality is very forward here, and it needs, it needs a lot of work coming on. Like you say, the office and all those other things. And a huge big lorry to come across the bridge, it shouldn't be allowed to, it says so. But they allow it to happen. This is the problem.
The booking is, it's, it's.
Mr Chairman, through the chair, please.
What, councillor Darby?
The lawyer.
No restriction, I'm glad you can hear that.
And, and, and the bridge.
And total lean in the number of other areas.
Protect those, I mean, right, all you've got to do is set up lorry watch, and when you see forty-eight lorries arrive, you suppose take all the numbers, bring gas, gas on the fireball.
All right.
Not on.
But, Mr Chairman, I will, when I come to write this, um, I will take on board your comments regarding square quality and your your root concerns regarding this matter, and, and you can only see an increase in traffic through the town, particularly with the um, proposed HS two.
They do, they do, they do. Provide more, more electric car parking things, that's their answer.
Commissioner Brown. Just to clarify, it doesn't seem to, uh, it doesn't seem to matter a lot, climate either.
All that.
Yeah.
The thing is, where you're at.
This is, Mr Chairman, it's what, they won't come up, because you have to, the two have to agree, or they're not, we, I know Kimberly doesn't agree, I know Peter doesn't agree, so there should be major problems in the future regarding these matters.
Absolutely. Did, did, uh, do we, who wrote this?
Eddie Saunders, Mr Chairman.
Well, I think she was acting up.
But please, you're right. Mr Chairman, if you are a borough councillor, please be very careful with the comments. The council has no control over our.
Nice to have you, it's nice to have you. Looking at this document, uh, uh, as farmers have already done, truthfully, we could sit here for the next two days. And it's, 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 I'm sorry, it's a total waste of time and money. Now, I know they've put this out, and page one is the same, page one is a waste of time, so we scrap that for two, three, two. But this, this plan is not going to help us in Stapleford at all.
No, no.
There's nothing.
There's nothing in it.
There's nothing positive there. There's no meat on the bone. And I hope you tell them that, because.
Chair, without, um, I, I won't call any of our officers. But without, um, uh, talking to my leader, I suppose, um. I, I think this is about the pitfall he's been through, isn't it?
Of course, you're leading, not mine.
Yeah. But it's about the pitfall that Brockstow's gone through anyway, and, 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 and there's enough problems with it anyway. Can we just say that we're just not happy at all?
No.
Mr Chairman, can I say that you are very concerned with regard to the content of the document?
Yes, yeah.
And, uh, the quality, the accuracy, as you say, the fact that you don't feel Stapleford has been taken into consideration, how it's made in here, by the way, has, um, not been taken into consideration when this document has been written? Does that sound?
I agree with that.
And that there is no evidence of, that they're actually going
to do it, I don't think.
To, yeah, exactly. There's no evidence that they've been putting this into practice, but why do we think they are now?
Absolutely.
Um, without going to all the bits in here, because I'm conscious at the time, and they have totally messed up the way they altered this and the draft that, which have finally got me in the first place. But, um, and the appendices don't seem to be, and they seem to be all over the place now. Um, can I suggest, when you look at it, we've been discussing the Revival Chapel. It says it's a listed building according to Croftair, which is not in their list here. As far as I can see.
Page on there, Dave.
Uh, no, it says it's a listed building. Seventy Chapel and Marshery.
Can I say on the main door?
That's on page one eight, one nine three.
On, on my page, it's one eight eight, there's blank, essentially, not.
Yes, there's loads of things on the original, which was what went to Brockstow Council.
Yes.
And you'll find that some of these appendices are just blank pages, and it says, um, travel plans, this will be answered by one oh six agreements.
Yes.
Everything that involves money will be addressed by one oh six contributions from builders. There's no indication that they're going to invest anything in it. Um, which is obviously why they're not built sort of things. Um, I know it says listed buildings and scheduled arrangements. There is, or there used to be a couple, we're saying building of interest or of historical interest, and I would suggest the Art for Me Centre.
Yes.
And I would suggest
Bon's Rock.
Even the police station.
Yeah.
There's also no mention.
This building, Mr Chairman?
And this building, yeah, we'll say this building as well, it is listed.
And the old cross.
Not listed, but it is down as a building of historic interest.
Yeah, that's, that's your question.
It's not.
Monster. Oh, I shouldn't say that.
Um.
Mr Chairman, are you putting four of the cross as a building of historic interest?
Yeah.
Point of order, point of order. Then point of order, be very careful.
And I would suggest for sites of special type of interest, that we could say Bon's Rock is. And I would suggest for the sites of specials, type of the interest, that we could say Bonn Rocky.
Bonn Rocky, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, all they say here is the land behind Sandy Prep, well, that isn't.
Well, that is.
It's not behind, is it? It's at the side, isn't it?
I mean, I'm just gonna suggest we put Bonn Rock specifically in our local plan particularly. Now the, now there's been a change of ownership of the land. Uh, but this idea that the, things like travel demand, that everything will be done by developers' contributions.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing that concerns me, and I'd like to make that point as well, that if it's going to be done by developers' contributions, as we know in the past, for things that develop an extra contribution.
Put the grass.
It goes into Brockster's coppers and is never seen again.
No, that's right. Grass picking slavers look what they don't say.
As with Phil Farm, where we know that Westermann's paid so much money, has anything properly been done? No.
We've employed all our last day.
Yeah.
Mister Chairman, please.
And it really does concern me that, that there seem to be no indication that Brockster are actually trying to invest anything. Um, you know, to improve anything.
I would say so.
No, actually. Um. And I, it really, I think it is just, really is something totally. And it's not on every page, but at the end of all these policies, at lots of, at the end of a lot of them, it says, well, it doesn't say, they took it off this. It says sustainability of travel. And virtually on every sheet that I've got, it says sustainability of travel. The policy has been assessed against reasonable alternatives and provides sustainable development with no significant negative impact, but cannot be sufficiently mitigated. Precise.
Careful.
Chair, that. Chair, that was hard.
What does that mean?
Chair, that was hard.
Because one, one is I think, councillor, councillor, then councillor.
I can't understand, I'm sorry, thank you. I can't understand either that, um, what they're getting at here, because they haven't given us any, um, information at all regarding that. They haven't expressed themselves very well, haven't they? So we are not sure exactly what we're supposed to be getting, if any.
Chair, that was me comment round. And as, uh, as we're all in, and a lot like stamp of councillor Exeter and councillor William Pope, as, um, David and whoever, who spent a lot of time filling, uh, a claim for, I can't quote what money it was, because I don't know, because it was this, and it was that. And I think it was all towards regeneration project of Stapleford.
Yes.
And none of the borough councillors at the time, then all of a sudden, it went to Beeston. So I would like it to be pointed out that if any, looking at this, well, we're gonna get loads of money to invest. And like it was in as well, but if money, if people are investing in Stapleford, it goes back into Stapleford, and it isn't channelled to any other town within the borough. Because that is what has happened to us before, and that has caused us. That's why Stapleford is the way it is now, in my eyes, and that's meaningful. No comments.
Yeah, uh, councillor Doherty is totally correct, I'm only saying. And, and, and it's a disgrace. We've lost money before, but we're not gonna lose any more because we've failed with it. And we're gonna fight to the end this time, but not with the ground we've got in front of us.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Well, there's nothing to find.
Well, it's, it's nothing there, that's what I said earlier.
Yeah. Um. I, I, I have gone through all the bits there, because I'm conscious of that, I want to keep you all listening to me. But hopefully what I've picked out has given an example of, of what I think the situation is there. Please, if you can, um, I will try and, if I'm bothered with this, I will, I will get go through the page numbers again and redo them, because they're, for the sake, we originally had a draft which we kind of got hold on. And then they decided that they were gonna hold it slightly. And that, and what I asked to ask, they didn't actually voluntarily even give us one of these.
No.
We, despite the fact we asked for it, we had to complain bitterly to even get one copy. Which again, and they can take, they call that consultation. And if you look on the consultation page, you've got a wonderful little sort of tick box with loaded questions.
Yeah.
Can I suggest, if you are going to do things, send it direct, type it out, write it out, whatever, and send it to them separately. Ducks are in there, tick boxes full of loaded questions. Um.
Mister Chairman, um, I will, on behalf of the Redes, a full minute record, full minute records will be sent, because in the past, times fill out consultation documents, it never fits before I let them send it to council meeting.
Never fits, has it? Anybody think, apart from you?
So I will be, um, and what I'll do is I'll write these minute records up and I'll run it past the leader of the council before I, um, send it to the borough to ensure.
We've got plenty, if we've got plenty of time, it's got to be by November, hasn't it?
I can send it.
I'd be quite happy if you.
Well, Bob, I.
Sorry?
Bob, I.
Probably. I think it's the third. Um, I, I'd be quite happy if, when you do the minute reference, that if you send it round to everybody, so you've all got something. Because I appreciate, I've done a lot for the talking, um, so I think it would be o- only fair that you, you see the minute reference and that you're all happy with it.
Mister Chairman, that's because I made your comments on the table.
I was gonna say, I think there's a meeting, I don't know if it was Saturday just gone, or it's tomorrow, I can't remember on it, it's been on social media. And, and Stephen's meeting a group of people in Beeston, talked about this, and I can't remember what the group's called. And I, I'm sure, I'm sure I was told that there were gonna be a meeting or something like that, I don't know, someone's one in Beeston.
Can I, can I just go back up to that?
Uh huh.
Um, Ken Mathlin spoke to Dave Lawson, who's one of Stephen's. And Dave Lawson told him categorically, there were going to be no consultation meetings.
Mister Chairman, I would.
Yeah, there'll be one in Beeston.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Pre- pre- Mr. Chairman, we can't, um, we can accept Saunders or, um, Steve Dance as before, or the heads of department before, previous consultations come out and speak to us. But I was informed it would not be coming out this time. So the, that, it's news to me that the consultation in Beeston is not part of that here.
Well, we can't get over it, so yeah, he's up with good sort of meeting, isn't he?
Well, he's probably up, he's probably heard I'd ordered a load of road funds on supply.
Mister Chairman, to the chair, one at times, who's first?
I can't, I can't see how the officer has looked at that. I can't, the actual reported officer there, he, he, it seems, it seems so vague. I don't think he's ready.
Mister Chairman, I can't comment on that.
I can't.
And, uh, as borough councillors, that's up to you to take that up with the borough council. Council, I can't comment on that. I can only take on board what you're telling me tonight, I hope I paraphrase what you've said. The way you want it. I will put it into writing, I'll run it around everyone for comments.
Yeah, I think that's, uh, so that everybody.
However, what I do stress is, I can only take comment from members who are sitting round this table on it. Because those who haven't attended the meeting, haven't been part of this discussion, so I can't take comments from them. I can only send it to them for information. So what I'll do is I'll send it out to people round the table, and I'll send it out for, and so I'll do the comment. For those who haven't been here. Yeah. The comment. For those who haven't been here, I'll send it to them, look at, I can't take comments from them.
Chair, in, in your comments concerning the borough council, I think you're aware where I stand on a number of things on the chip as well. But because of the structure of the council now, it's very hard, as I'm trying to say, it's very hard to put a question into format and then get a response. So that's where we probably all need to be together on a response to that. So everybody from this town is seeing on the same inch, because the amount of questions required regularly, ring up.
We're only allowed one.
We're only allowed one question, and it, it's, well, no comment together. But that's what I'm trying to say, we need to be together on what was said about things like this. And, and, and try and formulate, so they'll look towards, because in politi- it, it's required that a big group is odd to me, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
So I will do this as soon as possible and get it round to you next.
You have to join Chris's pop, and then you'll be the big group, one, one question.
Well, I, I won't comment, I see it all right as well.
I can't comment, I can't, I'm sorry, as the officer here, I can't comment, and I've got to start running the, the show. Um, but I, I can see you've got more clout there than I have.
But we all, we recognise that it's not very much, as far as politics was concerned.
But is there, are there any further comments, Mister Chairman, on this side, so before I take it away and re-read?
There was one thing I forgot, and I, I don't know where the David, but what about William Willey, one of Kingston's buildings, I don't know where it stands. I don't know where it stands on the, it's been there a long time.
I have got some listed the ones that are considered of, um, historic interest, and I can't, I couldn't find it.
Can I say?
Well, it is, yeah.
It's over on the view now.
Yeah.
And so.
The John's is on it.
The John's is listed.
I just wondered, because William Willey, I, I just thought, I don't know whether you could bring it up, Dave, if you're here.
Well, the, the thing is that, well, we can do it, those sort of buildings. Firstly, we can ask about those sort of things. And secondly, we can put them in our neighbourhood plan as well. And we can't actually get them listed as such, but, but we can put them in there.
Yeah.
As a list of historical buildings.
It's a question, it was over from the chip shop, it went up there.
They are. They're on it.
They're all listed.
Councillor Brown.
I mean, there was also the other things, I mean, for example, you probably wouldn't want to go down the listed route, because what we can't do is.
Yeah, uh huh.
But there is some people ACV, which we would probably forgotten about in the, on the neighbourhood. I don't think that we've got ACVs in there, which is assets of community value. Yeah, and, and publicly.
There was.
Maybe being pulled into that. There was, you said.
There was the original, but they took the man.
I was gonna say, I think it's, one more thing, have we got the Saxon Cross in there?
Yeah.
Yes, I missed that.
Yeah.
We're asleep on it.
Obviously, the old cross. The original's actually. Had those sort of buildings on it. Their revised version has got listed buildings only, and scheduled monuments, and the other ones have been taken out.
Uh, it's such a few other things, and we seem to be forgotten about ACVs.
And that, and that's somewhere.
Mister Chairman, I don't think there are ACVs that can play this role.
I suppose, yes, we've never played it.
No, no one has played it as an ACV, and it's not an easy process to go down.
No.
Um, as far as I'm aware, there aren't any in town.
It's not easy to, uh, it's.
It's true, but not easy, you know, you put up a lot of obstacles, Mister Chairman, you're reading all along with it. Listing, um, if you, I would pose an interesting bill, because the restrictions it puts on you are, it's very high, and if there's been a lot of alterations to the, to the buildings, they would list them. There's been additions, and such like, it quite possibly would list any of them.
listed, listed buildings are all well and good, and I love to see listed buildings, but I'm afraid that this document we should be worrying about in big time, because there's nothing in it. There's nothing for us at all. Aspirations for total, there's not even any aspiration for it by the Borough for us, nothing.
There you go, you're in tones of your ass, and we're two, no, you're better.
In my words, uh, uh, Mister Mayor, is we are being abused and still being abused by the Borough Council, and until they get their act together, I don't see much happening for us, and that's a disgrace.
Mister Chairman, if I can read what you said tonight, put it into things, which are, I'll send it round as soon as I can, okay? Are we happy with that, Mister Chairman, Mister Leader? Can we move on?
Yeah.
Thank you. Before we do, can I pass the, um, the issue about the state thing for the first class unit as it was? Can I call you forward as these next items is the audit before, not he just, if you all get that fast. Um, I've got a couple of comments, five thousand, three thousand, you know, column. Um, I should be pointing out to you, I've heard it's named, um, three thousand, about two percent, about three three thousand activity, you know, it's pointed out to me. He's also pointed out to me with regard to, um, best public rights, and a couple of the thereby. Now, the reason for this, for us, is related to the auditorium, is because, sorry, is because of our committee cycle. So I, I, sorry, our council cycle, that's something that they'll need to look at next year. Initially, they wanted me to report the audit in May, and I pointed out to them, well, we have the annual council in May, and then we have the next meeting in June, so I won't look at the dates, because I was three days late in putting the and I, I can't say that no one exercises the right to look at the documents anyway, but I will, so, I will need to look at the, um, kind of calendar meetings for next year, but we will have new external auditors, so things might change then as well. Um, that's about it. I had an issue the previous year as well, it, I was right, because I was on holiday at the time they gave me, because I booked my holidays before they sent me in the times. I had to alter it for when I would be here, but anyway, two nights is the rest that I could answer questions. Again, it's a problem of small council, because you only have the one person, with the large councils, you've got a fuller accounting department. However, I just report that to you, that it has passed, there are no problems with the actual finances. Okay, just as the chairman, I first have a change of seat for you today, tonight, because my colleague, uh, Sir Neil Pepper, has called away suddenly. Um, I can tell you that there are no issues with it, um, we're on budget at the moment. I don't approach it yet to be a problem. Maybe we just don't know anything, I can show you online, but, um, I couldn't put it off tonight.
See you later, yeah.
It is all right, I, I am a.
I've got a copy set.
We'll have a break next coming next week, I think we'll all be alright.
I didn't want to start faulting it myself, so I'd like it to be checked by workers before it comes out. Right. Yes, I can see future dentures, Mister Chairman, is there anything, anything like on the future of anything?
Yeah, well, if, if you could, please, I mean, obviously, when I, sometimes we go off on one, which I.
No.
I was concerned, as, as you were aware, of policy and planning that I found out about the eighty, eighty hundred thirty four, which I would have brought up anyway. Right, and, um, after I ran your statement, I'm over it, which thank you, and I argued, and I won't be in policies again. Some of us backed what was said, some of us didn't, but whatever, but what was agreed, apparently next year for the hundred years of, you know, the Great War, that that it would be equally shared, and so the price, but we need to put a request.
Yes, Mister Chairman, I have received a formal letter.
Oh, have you? Oh, that's.
It was too late to go in correspondence, because the chairman had drawn it in.
We have, we have.
I have received it. Um, um, I'm just waiting for my final account from road closure, of how much it's going to cost me this year before I I put that in.
I didn't lose the temper again, I wish I didn't lose the temper just today.
No, I don't.
I didn't lose the temper, but I was a bit.
Kind of, part of the conversation of other members. And what's happened is, remember this Sunday, Brockster Borough Council have granted funding to one particular parish to pay for their, um, road closure, which is very unfair. They didn't invite anyone else to apply. And I did, councillor Craig, very kindly, because he very kindly told me about it, it was coming up on the agenda. Because the girl, they kindly wrote out a statement which I.
And if I'm on the mark, the group said that he should.
There was no, I can assure you that there was no invitation to.
Oh, no, no, I said that.
There are, because the only, only one parish is being funded, there are remembrance services at a number of parishes, and I have spoken to my other colleagues. There are remembrance services at a number of parishes, and I have spoken to my other colleague Clark, who knew nothing about it. We also attended a parish clerk layover meeting, as did other members around here, and it was not mentioned there, and that would have been the time to mention it. However, we are being invited to apply next year, I know we'll be doing.
There's one question, personal interest, that actual clerk meeting, who reads that?
Yeah, Grace, you've got.
Mr Chairman, we would need a mail.
Who said that earlier?
They almost shouted at each other, I don't know.
Yeah, but I'd like to say, I know I'm waiting for another time, but, but I think really, Tom Clark, when you're happy with with, uh, Captain McGrath, you ought to call him Flower, really.
Well, that's a bit there now. Flower. Right, I'll second that, David.
Thank you.
Call it, David. That's all you do.
I'm trying, I'm trying, if you like, with Mr Chairman.
Can you, can you just just point out at the time, that we will be having the idea of what we've been looking at, the computer things that were. We've got so much on the agenda for this one, but hopefully we might even have a demonstration in one of the.
Ten to six.
Don't, don't, don't anyone say what's up with the quiz, it will be on the next agenda. I know everybody knows that, because we. It is just, we knew that the night would be long, if we wanted, because we could give us a bit of support on that.
Mr Chairman, I'll take the, um, the, as I said, the word will be on the next agenda. Remember it's Sunday, I will report back, as I always do, to that meeting, so that will be on the agenda, and I'll report back to you on it. Um, is there any further items?
Dead to the next meeting, it's the first of December.
Yes, Mr Chairman, can I?
Hold on.
Can I just invite you on behalf of the town mayor to join him at the end of the meeting, um, to toast the dedication for the season? I hope you're enjoying, I'm at that event. It's always pleasant, it doesn't last very long, and we'd ask you to stay behind and join the town in that occasion.
Only if you wear the Christmas jumper for that event. You're supposed to.